Welcome to everyone that's here and that's watching on TV. I call this meeting to order. Let's have a roll call. Let's stand for invocation.
Father, we thank you this morning for your many blessings upon us. In observing you, we thank you for this new year that you have granted us. We pray, Father, that throughout this year, that we would honor you, we would glorify you, we would serve you in everything we do. Bless our county. We thank you, Father, for your blessings upon our county and upon our individual citizens. Help us all to serve you in everything we do. Be with us as a board this morning as we deliberate these various issues. Help us to make those decisions that would be pleasing to you and those that would be the best for the community that we represent. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Face the flag, please. I place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Motion for approval. Second.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have one zoning issue for consideration at a public hearing this morning. This is for a conditional use permit, and this is for Tony Bullock. As you recall, and especially for the two new members on the board, when we're dealing with conditional use permits, this does require quasi-judicial procedures, very akin to a court case of sorts where we'll be taking testimony and receiving evidence about the site itself. And any appeals to this decision go straight to Superior Court. There are a lot of other items associated with this issue of quasi-judicial procedures. We're here to establish the facts. You kind of have to let go any hearsay items. Witnesses will be placed under oath, and you're looking for material evidence about the site. There'll be a detailed record of this information, and no ex parte communication. In other words, if you met as a group or been out on site, you really need to divulge that information here before, in open session. And again, any appeal to this particular action will go to Superior Court. We'll move now for anyone that would like to present information to be sworn in by the clerk.
Is this where we say we want to talk?
Anyone wishing to speak this morning can step forward.
We usually don't do anything until the public hearing is closed.
Just tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God.
Some information about the site itself. It is located, I'll show you a site map in just a minute. It's at very close to the intersection of State Road 1414, Roosevelt Spain Road, and Brierley Road, which is very close to the Belvoir Crossroad area. The comprehensive land use plan shows this area as rural residential slash agricultural. It's in a more rural area of the county. This map, again, just to orient you, this is the intersection of Brierley Road and Roosevelt Spain Road. This is right on this northeast corner, and you can see there are a few residential lots right along Roosevelt Spain Road. This is the larger tract here that we'll be talking about this morning. This map also shows the current zoning. One side of Roosevelt Spain Road is actually rural residential. The use that we're contemplating this morning is a sand mine. It is allowed by a conditional use permit within the rural agricultural area, which is the darker green, so it's already appropriately zoned. Future land use plan map, I've already indicated on this side where the particular property we're dealing with this morning is located. It is actually rural residential slash agricultural, again, intended for more rural-type land uses. Here's your site map. This is oriented a bit differently. North is to the left side of the screen. Here's Brierley Road, Roosevelt Spain Road running here. This is the property boundary in red. This is the area, once you meet all the setback requirements, this is the area that will be excavated as part of the sand mine. And around the perimeter of that excavation area, the zoning ordinance does require a berm. This berm is usually about three foot in height and helps screen the area that's under excavation. Also point out here, this is the proposed driveway out onto Brierley Road that any of the trucks hauling the materials out would use. These are the individual residential lots here along Roosevelt Spain Road. No access points at that location. There's also an additional area in the tract that's being reserved, shown in yellow. And I wanted to also remind you of some of the conditions that go along with this particular type of operation per the zoning ordinance. It's a minimum of 100-foot separation. That was what I showed you in the previous map, from the edge of the pit to any of the adjacent properties. Hours of operation come into play only when there's blasting required, and in this case with a sand mine, there won't be any. We've already mentioned the berms that are there for screening, and there's also a requirement for a state-issued mining permit. So we'll go through our process first. That is handed off to the state. The state would also issue a permit. Also with these procedures, we have to go through several criteria to determine if this is an appropriate use, and several questions need to be answered. Will this particular use materially endanger the public health or safety? Staff believes that with the screening and the buffering that's required there, it will not materially endanger public health or safety. Will it substantially injure the value of the adjoining or budding property? Staff, again, believes with the requirements and conditions that are imposed, that it will not substantially injure the values of the adjacent properties. Is it in harmony with the area? We believe that it is, and it's consistent with the surrounding land uses. And is it in conformity with the land use plan and other plans adopted by the board? We believe that it is. So with that, Mr. Chairman, in your package this morning, we have two motions. Number one, acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete, complies with all the zoning ordinance requirements, and to approve it based on the conditions that are listed in the zoning ordinance, along with two other ones. One is to obtain an NC DOT driveway permit onto Brierley Road, and with that, there are some requirements due to some weight restrictions on that road. And also, staff is recommending that the additional screening be retained on those lots or behind those lots that are on Roosevelt Spain Road. And I'll just show you real quickly what we're talking about here. These are the individual residential lots that front onto Roosevelt Spain Road. We're recommending, within this area, that the existing vegetation, different trees, different types of vegetation already in place, we're recommending that that stay in place. And also behind that, would all, would, the new berm would be installed as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for any questions or comments, as well as public comments.
Does anyone have any questions for Jane? With that, I declare the public hearing open. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this issue? All right, declare the public hearing closed. It was a pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
You can go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve. It is subject to the additional conditions as outlined on page two.
I second the motion.
Motion's second, Ms. Williams, had comment?
Yes, I had a comment. He said something about we needed to let, you know, if we went, I didn't exactly know where it was. So I did go look at it because I couldn't quite figure out where it was, and I did go and look at it.
Thank you.
Will we vote?
Yes, let's vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Holden?
Commissioners, on page 15 of your agenda packet, you have materials related to the opportunity that the county currently has for the advanced refunding or refinancing of some debt issuances due to the current economic climate in the market. Does suggest that we have three debt issues that are callable, and it would make sense to consider refinancing for considerable savings. A public, notice of public hearing did run in the Daily Reflector on Monday, December the 29th, and pursuant to General Statute 160A-20, we would ask that the public hearing be held, after which, the preliminary findings resolution, which is included in your packet, be considered by the board.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Holden? We declared a public hearing open. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, have you signed up?
Seeing none, we declared a public hearing closed. It was a pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
I second it.
Motion's second. No discussion, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think it's important to note that this action will save the county $2.4 million over the next several years, so I commend our finance department, our management team, for pursuing this.
Thank you for your hard work in saving the taxpayers' money, Mr. Holden. Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Gaird. All right, next, Florida. We have our employee service awards.
Well, this morning, once again, we're here to recognize our workforce within Pitt County government, and as we do on a quarterly basis, we like to recognize our employees and their dedication to the citizens of Pitt County and their tenure with Pitt County. So today, we're recognizing 5, 10, 15, 20, and 25, 3, 25-year group of employees. So we'll start with the five-year employees. If we can hold the pause till the end, until everybody's came up, and then we will then proceed to the next group after applause. So we'll start with the first person, Jasper Burnett with Pitt Area Transit. This is our PAT system. Gwen Burns, DSS, Assistant Director. Yeah, come right here. Your director wants a picture. Marie Crockett, Social Services. Tim Grigg, DSS, Social Services. Doug Johnson, Detention Center. Teresa Johnson, Social Services. These are for the scrapbook, right? Thank you. Richard Johnson, Social Services. Paula Meekins, Social Services. Oh, Johnson, I'm sorry. Richard Johnston was the sheriff's office. Paula Meekins is Social Services. Sorry. She requires it. Okay. Ricky Mohammed, Detention Center. Andrew Peel, Sheriff's Office. Jane Simmons, Solid Waste and Recycling. Seems like yesterday. And our last five-year recognition is to Robert Sowards Detention Center, and he couldn't attend this morning, so give a round of applause to this group. Next, in the tenure category, we have Robert Abbott with Sheriff's Office. Okay, thank you. Kimberly Hardy, Register of Deeds. Shelley Leach, Finance. John Patterson, Detention Center. And our last tenure recognition is to Herbert Worthington, Solid Waste and Recycling. Also known as Tommy. Thank you. Round of applause, please. All right, in the 15-year category, we have William R. Gray Jr., Detention Center. I'm sorry, William, William Gay, I'm sorry. Thank you. We have Mark Langley, Detention Center. Next, we have Samuel E. Johnson, Planning Department, otherwise known to us as Eli. Got to turn around for a picture. Go to the left, yeah. Rebecca Lassiter, Detention Center. And our last 15-year recognition is to Stephen Sutton, Sheriff's Office. Round of applause again, please. All right, in our 20-year category, we have four wrapped boxes with silver paper that Ms. Hardy is sorting through. These are recognitions for these employees. At the 20-year mark within the organization, the employees are able to select a watch and is to recognize as this milestone of their career with us. Robert Phelps, Environmental Health, otherwise known to us as Mark. He is now the new supervisor of the Environmental Health Division.
He's buried that whole time, it's gonna get by a lot slow.
Reginald W. Satterfield, Inspections Department, again, otherwise known to us as Reggie. Our last 20-year, I'm sorry. Yeah, come back here. Sorry. Got the camera out, so. Our last 20 years to Samuel H. Smith, Solid Waste and Recycling. Again, a round of applause, please. Today, we have one special employee who is in our 25-year category alone in this recognition. This is a DSS employee, and she'll come forward. This is Catherine S. Parker.
Turn around and get a picture here. Congratulations.
First, I just want to say that... I'm thankful the board for reminding me to give applause. The county doesn't work without you guys. You make Pitt County work. Nothing we do in here moves the trash, nothing in here locks up a bad guy, nothing in here gets a child placed in a home like a DSS or gets people the assistance they need. So we thank you for what you do out there because Pitt County doesn't work without you. Manager has an announcement as well?
Yes, we'll break now for a reception for a few minutes. The employees, the guests, the public is welcome to join us. You'll come through the door here on the left. There's some light refreshments and juice and such. You can exit here on the door on your right, and then we'll resume the meeting in a few minutes.
Now we'll have the public address to the board. See, we have one person signed up, Ms. Harris.
I'm Brenda Harrison. My address is on file. I want you to know that when one year ends, another one begins. And I think of Paul in Philippians, when he said, "Forgetting those things which are behind and reaching forth to those things which are before." I press toward the mark of the prize of the high calling of God in Christ Jesus. We give allegiance to our country. We give allegiance to a prayer, but sometimes we forget that each, each thing that we do in life makes a mark for good or evil. I applaud our new commissioners. I want you to learn one lesson today. Did you know that you're not an employee of the county? Did you know that your salary of 400 and some odd dollars a month is not because you're employed? You are a board member with fiduciary responsibilities. Did you know that there is really not a private act and a public act? Because the Constitution doesn't give that for us. So as we enter 2015, you just might as well say, "Welcome aboard, Brenda," because I'm going to Washington, DC this month. And what you wouldn't listen to, I'm taking to our government. And what I've learned is the real story of Pitt County is that it's administered by Pitt County. But when you go to the state, the state says, "Oh, that's Pitt County's problem." But what it is, is a civil rights problem. It's called the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title VI. It says that if you receive federal funds and you play who it is and not what it is, that's called discrimination. And listen, I want you to know that I pray for you. I was in an automobile accident, and I had to look up. I had two surgeries. I had to look up. And then what I understood was this, that we can impact, but we need to be humble. We can care, but we need not to be accusing. We need to lead with honor and dignity, and not to try to say that our fellow man is wrong, but come together and find out what is right with our fellow man. And then if we do that, whether we are of color, or whether we are old, or whether we are disabled, or whether we are another religion, then when we come together, we come together with strength and power. We can face any obstacle as long as we understand that. I take you to now something that's very precious. The Lord is my shepherd. I shall not want. He makes me to lie down in green pastures. He restores my soul. He leads me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake. And yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death and difficulty, I will fear no evil, for he is with me. May the Lord bless each one of your houses, your finances, your personal lives, and God bless government.
Anyone else that wishes to address this board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. We have several items to report. The first item we have is a report from our Pitt County School Superintendent, Dr. Ethan Linker.
Morning, Dr. Linker.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. How are you today?
Good.
Good. Commissioners, Mr. Elliott. Do you have a team with me? Where's my button? Just that we appreciate the opportunity to come and share what's going on in our schools. We're really excited about some great things happening now, and as we move toward the future, the opportunities for kids just keeps, keeps, keeps growing. So we'll start with some good things that are going on. First, if you haven't seen, Ms. Jamie Dickerson from Eastern Elementary was the Regional Teacher of the Year, and if you've had the privilege to be in her class like I have, it's amazing what she does with kids every day. And, you know, we've got a lot of Jamie Dickersons in Pitt County schools, and we're very lucky to have the quality of teachers that we have. We also have another elementary teacher who's one of the three finalists for the Math and Science Awards for the state of North Carolina. So we've got great things going on in our quality of teaching. Next, just some information about some high school stuff that's going on, our credentials, part of our CTE programs. We had a record, you can see the number, 3,485 credentials earned in our CTE classes. That's the fifth-largest of any LEA in the state, and since we're only the 14th-largest LEA, we're going way above and beyond what's going on. Again, this is increasing opportunities for our kids. And then 38.5% of our students are actually getting a credential. This is based on population, not, based on the number of kids, so it's actually 11th in the state out of 115 school systems. So again, most of our kids are getting some sort of credentials. And a list of those type of credentials are, as you can read here. The Microsoft Office classes have been very popular for us. Nurse aide certification, anyway, you can read them all there. I'm not reading all through them. Microsoft Word Expert is one we added a year or so ago. In fact, my daughter got that one. It was kind of nice. CPR, first aid, you know, they're all here. We've also expanded options at our, some of our high schools, Farmville, and has added electricity. We will be expanding that to some other schools. We're also working with Pitt Community College to give more of those options even after school. We're working with Pitt Community College where they can use our buildings at night as well if need be. Pitt Community College is also coming in and teaching classes on our campus during the day for our kids. This year, it's, right now, we've got, I think it's Aiden and DH Conley. Those students have the opportunity to take public speaking and psychology, I believe, and get college credit while they're still sitting in our high schools classes. So again, opportunities for kids are always increasing. Some more good news. Elmhurst has been named one of the Title I reward schools, which is only 78 schools out of the whole state, and you get that award by moving all of your students. So we've taken all of our kids and we've moved them as a group and moved them forward... So, we've taken all of our kids and we've moved them as a group and moved them forward. So, that's how, that's a good recognition for Elmhurst. We had a school last year get named as well. So, this is something that Pitt County Schools continues to do every year. Real exciting stuff. Relationships with Pitt Community College, East Carolina University seem to be just moving along at a great clip. Our early college high school was approved by DPI. We've hired a new principal who will start next week. That individual has lots of experience. He's actually opened Lenore Community College years ago, so he has that experience, working with the new schools, working with DPI. So, he'll be able to come in and get this program started. First thing he's gonna do is start recruiting kids. You can see our goal is 75 students in our first class. The school itself will have about 375 kids after five years. Again, these kids will graduate in five years with a high school degree and a two-year... The goal was always a two-year general education degree from the community college. So, very excited about that. I can't say enough about what Pitt Community College has done to help make this just a reality for us. Next, we also are starting in the fall what we call our dual-language or dual-immersion program. We're gonna call, run, we call Splash. It's basically bringing in, at Belvors, we're gonna start it. It allows kids, starting in kindergarten, to learn everything in two languages. It'll be Spanish and English. So, all the kids will be, will learn everything in two languages, which means by the time they get to middle school, they'll be bilingual. All of the kids will be bilingual, which is something in Pitt County we obviously need. So, and what we see with doing this is these kids become much, at a much higher level academically as they move forward. The Spanish-speaking kids and the English-speaking kids all achieve at a higher academic rate. That's a great opportunity there. We kind of expect this program to be one we can copy and move around the county and put in different places as well, once we get it started. I'm gonna let Delilah Jackson talk a little bit, but also, there are other things that we're looking at. We're also looking at our STEM middle school program and some things and opportunities there. You've seen or heard of our STEM labs, you know, with our grant with Golden Leaf that was actually announced right here. We'll actually expand those labs to all of our middle schools and all of our K-8 schools next year. If you haven't had a chance to see what those labs look like, please let myself know, and we'll get you in one of the schools. You can see what they're doing, because it's really neat stuff. The kids really are enjoying it. It's hands-on. It's student-led. It's what, the future of education, what schools should look like. So, I did bring Dr. Delilah Jackson. She's gonna talk about some HR initiatives we're doing. Also, Mr. Michael Cowan, our finance officer, is gonna talk about some, I guess, some challenges financially as we move forward. Dr. Jackson?
Sarah, you gonna direct it for me? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to see all of you. I have a couple of things I want to share today. The first thing is regarding our teacher turnover report. From the previous year, we did see an increase in the 12, 13 school year. For the 12, 13, 14 school year, as you can see, we have a drop, which is just a small one. It's about 1.5% a little bit over from 18.05 to 16.49. So, it's a little bit over 1.5%. So, we are looking at the reflections of why our teachers are leaving our county. We do know that we have a lot that are retiring. We have a lot that are relocating. We have a lot of young people that seek out other ways to receive more money. So, we are looking and delving into that report that has come out to us recently. But we did want to share that information with you, that we are clearly trying to find ways to retain our teachers. And I'll be sharing a little bit more about that in the next slide, two slides. Also, we have National Board certification. We are always in Region One. We have the most of all of them in Region One, and North Carolina has the highest number of beginning, National Board certified teachers. And we have eight new ones that earned it this year. We'll be celebrating them on Wednesday at South Central. So, please come out if you have the opportunity. We'll be presenting their certificates and their pens, which is an honor to receive that pen. And we also had 19 people who decided to renew their National Board certification. This is a very extensive process and portfolio process that does take some over two years to have, and you also have to take assessments to pass. So, we're very proud of our National Board certified teachers to receive this honor. Now, the next slide is gonna be a little bit hard for you to see all that writing down at the bottom, but the key that I want to start out with is the half a circle. This is called our Key BT Program, and I would like to give credit to Mr. Seth Brown, our teacher support coordinator, and Mr. Tom Feller, our professional development coordinator, who are working hand in hand to define ways to train and retain our teachers. So, this is called a new program that we have called the Key BT Program. And we're gonna start, you see the half circle starts with orientation, training, advocacy, and resources. And I'm gonna read a little bit of that to you. I'm not gonna read it all, because I know it's hard for you to see that as well. And the mission of this is to engage and empower our innovative, creative, and effective BTs as collaborative leaders. Each school picks teachers that have just finished our Beginning Teacher Program, which is, starts after year three. One to three, they're beginning teachers. These are teachers that are in their fourth or their fifth year that we would consider our high flyers. They came out of the classroom. When they came in the door as a first-year teacher, we could see they already had characteristics that they were ready. So, our goal is to retain these teachers, but also grow them in a way that's gonna make them feel like they're influencing others, as well as their kids and their parents. So, in this program, and I'm gonna read from the paper, so you can understand what's there, we're facilitating the summer induction of new teachers, so that's what the orientation piece. They have an extensive orientation program in the summer for training. We're creating resources for them to use. There is a BT website that has been created by Mr. Seth Brown where they can go, click on something, and get all the information that they need. The Key BTs have been very instrumental in helping us get different types of resources that work in their classroom. They're assisting in facilitating monthly training. So, we're putting these beginning teachers, just finished, out to train other teachers. We're putting them out there so they can be seen and what their effective practices that they had could be shared. And we're also teaching them to advocate. We don't know what beginning teachers need if they do not tell us. So, these Key BTs are people that are out there fighting the fight for our first-year teachers, saying, "This is what they need. This is what I needed when I was there, so now I'm gonna speak for them." Because they may not know as a beginning teacher what they need at this point, so I'm gonna advocate for them. And that is, and the resources is the last part, which I mentioned. So, this program, we will use our best and brightest beginning teachers to support our newest teachers, and it is run by Mr. Seth Brown and Mr. Tom Feller. And we're very, very excited, because we know, we recognize that we need to keep our teachers here. We recognize that our turnover rate needs to be lower, and we're always setting that as a goal. But we really feel like this program will influence teachers to stay here, because we are, they're our future leaders, and we are training them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning and Happy New Year. My name is Michael Cowan, Assistant Superintendent of our Financial Operations for Pitt County Schools. And I'd like to first say thank you on behalf of all of our students, our parents, and our teachers and employees. Thank you for everything you do for our school system. You've made over a $35 million investment into the lives of our students, and we could not do what we do without you. So, again, thank you for that. Now, we are six months into the 2014-15 school year, and within six months into the beginning of the 2015-16 budget year, and I already kind of feel like we're behind, because after January, it starts to get moving fairly quickly. You know, our state leadership goes back into session this week. So, there's a lot of information that will be coming out over the next several months that will not only impact our operations, but your operations as well. What I've tried to do is highlight the top 10 challenges that we faced, that we already know that we could face going into the next fiscal year. I won't go into detail on all of them, but I just will hit the highlights of some of the information that we've started to share with our Board of Education, as well as with our school administrators, on next year's financial challenges. First of all, teacher salary increases phase two. You know, there was a concerted effort this year by our state leadership and the governor to increase the beginning teacher salary over a two-year period to $35,000. Beginning teacher salary currently stands at $33,000, so there will also be a commitment or a push to increase that up to the $35,000 beginning level this next year. We will be looking closely on a daily basis to see if the, if our state leadership will live up to this commitment that was made this past year, given the some of the financial difficulties that it appears that the state is challenged with at this point in time. Teacher assistance was a bone of contention in last year's budget. It basically was one of the issues that held up the final budget for over a month, and that had to be with the funding for teacher assistance. There was a large pressure to significantly reduce that funding for teacher assistance, which would have cut over 100 teacher assistants from Pitt County schools. That fear still lives on today, and I think that this will be also a very important topic as we move into the, into the budget planning at the state level. And will the state continue to fund teacher assistance at the beginning, early elementary grade levels? So, we'll continue to look closely at that. As always, the supplemental funding that Pitt County Schools relies on to accomplish many of our instructional goals is low wealth and local appropriations. We'll also have to continue to track that in light of the changes that are going on at the state level, particularly with relationships to Pitt County Schools and the Board of County Commissioners. There are certain things that have been done over the last couple of years. It's frightening. It should be frightening to our two boards. And it's the attempt to push and shift state responsibility down to the local level and push that burden down to the local government and the Board of Education to fund issues that were our state responsibilities. The ones that come to light are workers' comp and bus torque claims, and there's a whole host of other issues that are out there. But those are the ones that rise to the top in what we've seen over the last several years, which could mean millions of dollars of unfunded liabilities back to the local government and the school system. We need to be on the same page with concerns to communicate to our state leadership that we do not support the shifting of such responsibilities and burdens from the state level down to the local level. Just shifting that burden from one area to another is not the solution to any budget situations. We also have charter schools that are emerging here in Pitt County. We have two that are scheduled to open this year, this next school year, as well as a virtual academy that will attract students from the K-12 arena. That has the potential to impact significantly the level of resources that we're able to fund within our school system. We could be looking at 500-plus students that could be moving out of our local school system ranks into a charter school. First of all, we must, as a school system, be able to communicate that students will find no better education than what they do within our public schools. And then be able to also make sure that we have identified the areas that are in jeopardy and make sure that we can live up to that budget, balanced budget. Driver's education, as we were discussing this morning, a significant reduction that has been shifted out of the state budget. That's over $400,000 in funding that we are in jeopardy of losing and making sure that all of our students that are in ninth grade are prepared to drive once they, that reach the age of 16. So, as you can see, it is still early in the budget season. We haven't actually started yet as more information gets out from the state level. But these are some of the emerging issues that could be jeopardizing or impacting our operations in areas that both the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners need to be working very closely and together on as we move into the 2015-16 school year. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and I think you'll find no trouble getting us on the same page with unfunded mandates from the state. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Linker or staff? Ms. Ward?
Not to extend this much longer, but what criteria is it for the early college applications for the students and the parents to be aware of?
Most of those are still being developed. We are creating a rubric that will meet those, but it'll mostly be underserved students and kids who show a lot of promise and give them that opportunity to get a little jumpstart on college.
Okay, thank you. And they contact whom?
We will be sending people out to the schools. It's the first thing, Mr. Winningham, our new principal, will be doing. He'll be working with the principals and counselors at each of our K-8 and middle schools to meeting with, meet with all the eighth graders. And then we'll set up parent meetings that first month as well, so they can get an idea of what's going on. Then that person will meet with all those students. Kids will apply. There'll be an application process, and we'll use the rubric to evaluate those applications.
What about private school eighth graders who'll be coming into our county high schools?
They'll have that opportunity to meet with Mr. Winningham as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Thank you. I particularly like the idea of you working with Pitt Community College and East Carolina University and bringing that together and making a strong relationship for our children, our students. Also, the bullying, that's been a tremendous problem in the school system. People are taking their lives, students are taking their lives, and it's just been a horrific problem. I noticed that the local law firm has joined in and put a lot of emphasis on that. What are we doing specifically now to decrease that bullying? And now it's going to another level in cyberbullying. It seems to be more of a concern.
We're just gonna turn off the internet, so just to take care of cyberbullying, we'll solve that problem there. No, seriously. You know, it's a problem. It's been a large problem for a long time, and it has gotten worse with the internet and everything else. You know, if you walk into any school, one of the first things you're gonna see is a bullying awareness bulletin board somewhere in the front hallways in every school. We're also working with, what's called the Mediation Center, Ms. Lane back there. She goes in our schools and sets up things, sets up assemblies for the kids and students. All of our principals do work with people on the outside to bring individuals in. We also have, working with, I believe, CenturyLink, we're gonna install bullying tip lines at every school, so kids or parents can call the schools and leave information. We also already have in place Crime Stoppers phone lines. You can call those as well. So, that's, that's out there. So, that's a lot of opportunities for kids or parents to reach out to the schools. Plus, I know, within the walls of the schools, we're making that as aware as we can, making that, just bringing that to the forefront of what's going on.
Mr. Woods?
Yes. Assistant Lieutenant, the joint venture between Pitt Community and the Pitt County Schools on this five-year deal or whatever, is that funding gonna be from the Pitt Community side? Or are you gonna have to take the money from your side from Pitt County Schools for that?
Some of it will come from our side, but we, part of the grant, part of the process is you submit an application to the state. The state approves it. The next is up to the General Assembly to approve that, and there is funding from the General Assembly to run these schools. The principal paid for by the state, the counselor, what's called the college liaison, and the teachers, of course, will be part of ADM. So, most of the money will be funded through the state.
So, it ought to have your financial position then, in addition to getting a better education for the students?
Right. Well, it'll pay for those individuals, yes, sir. Now, for most, it'll pay for about the first couple of months of the principal we'll have to deal with, but we'll accept that as we move forward.
Ms. Coulson-Judd?
Yeah, I do. Going back to the bullying, nothing's gonna be done until the state legislature actually takes some action, at least in my opinion, to make it unlawful to do that. Right now, there is no law, and I appreciate that our two boards have actually gone for a joint resolution to the legislature and asked them to pass something that puts some teeth into it. You're gonna hear me say this over and over and over as long as I sit in this chair. Everything you said was fine, but I still contend. And please don't enumerate all the things that you've done with what I'm about to talk with, because it's insufficient. In the bigger picture, it's insignificant. It has to do with vocational training. The fact that more than 50% of the kids will never go to college, we don't put 2%, in my opinion, of the effort towards vocational training that needs to be. I don't have, I mean, a welding class, it's great. But you need electrician classes. You need automotive. You need bricklaying. You need all kinds of things that will get kids that are gonna go into blue-collar jobs that have meaningful paychecks associated with them. You're still too focused on everybody going to college. You have got to break that. And I know that your hands are tied somewhat by the federal government and somewhat by the state, but you gotta do something. We have a lot of kids that end up in crime because they see no future. We have kids that have gotta go 21, I mean, 20, what is it, 28, 29 hours to graduate from high school when the state only mandates 21. The kids that you're losing, in my opinion, that are not, that quit school are many of the kids that would benefit from the vocational. There are also those that would benefit from the fact that if they're gonna go into the vocational, maybe they shouldn't be asked to do the higher number of hours. Focus on them getting, being able to read, write, and do arithmetic. They have got to have those basic skills in any job out there. And I know I'm kind of lecturing to a willing ear here, but please, sound the alarm at the state level and federal level and do your part as a... the state level and federal level and do your part as a county to try to get somebody to understand, not enough goes to vocational.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else that wishes to make any comments? All right, we thank you for your, your time. We look forward to our continued strong partnership between our board and the school board and the work you're doing. We thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'd like to ask a question of you.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
You and Scott. Do we have regular meetings with the school board since they get a huge chunk of the budget? Do we, do we, do we have those? You just sent me off and they said that that would be good. Do we have that?
In the past, the Board of County Commissioners had an annual meeting with the school board and it was based upon the prior education compact, which required that, which the goals of the compact were discussed. But since the compact expired probably six, seven years ago, the Board of Commissioners had not, has not held regular meetings with the school board unless there's a topic of interest that it's come about to do so.
Well, that was one of the things they brought up last week, and I really like Commissioner Coulson's comment and totally agree. Is that possible of us doing any of that, that we can get our little two cent worth in?
Sure, if the board desires that, yeah.
I mean, can we, can we think about that as a board? Because we put a lot of money into education, and he has a very solid point. I took home economics and industrial arts. I learned how to drive a nail. Didn't know before, so he is absolutely right. Can't we do that?
I'm sure we can. We'll put it on for discussion item in the future.
I meet twice a year.
I think that when we discontinued those formal meetings with the board is when we started asking the superintendent to come and, and address us on a quarterly basis, Scott?
Yes, sir.
So we do have that opportunity. And sometimes some of the school board members will actually come.
I like some interaction, you know, 'cause he said twice a year was, you know, but at some point, you do need that basic in life, you know? You really need that basic in life.
I agree. Thank you. Mr. Holder?
This time I'd like to announce that Pitt County Government has been in receipt of the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for
Hooray!
For our fiscal year 2014-2015 Annual Budget Document. We are pleased to report that this is the 18th consecutive year that Pitt County has been recognized for this prestigious award. I also just want to point out, I was curious to see, it shouldn't be something that we take for granted. There are actually only 52 local units of government in the state of North Carolina that were recognized for this award. 19 of those were counties. So of our 100 counties, only 19 were recognized for this budget award. And this is something that Pitt County has historically achieved and we continue to achieve. So just want to thank our budget staff, Financial Services Department, all of the department heads, and you who collaborate to make this budget document possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Ms. Booker?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The fiscal year to date, July 1, 2014 through December 31, 2014, collection rate for real and personal property taxes is 83.52 versus 79.38 last year, which is a 4.14 increase. Part of this increase is from increased collections. Part of that is from the Tag and Tax Together Motor Vehicle System, which now you pay ahead of time. You do not have any delinquencies in that moving forward. What that does not do is relieve us from the file that we get each month from the state in which we still completely do valuation, situs-ing, adjustments, prorations, and refund. And that also does not relieve us from the prior year's delinquencies. But it is seeing a positive improvement along with our increased collections on our report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I think it's always good when we acknowledge the increase in collection, as showed near about 4%. That being the case, I move we approve this report.
I second it.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Chairman, board members?
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, and Mr. Elliott, you're about to talk about the Capitol Budget Workshop. Is there any way that this board would approve a, what I consider a more sensible time to start at? 10:00 AM in the morning is what is now scheduled. Could we do this at like 8:00 or 8:30 so they, it doesn't take up the whole day?
Is that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion.
I'll second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
So is it 8:00 or 8:30?
Either one, I don't care. Whatever this, like, let's say 8:00 o'clock.
8:00.
Did it help you a little bit?
You can run right over here, Jamie. You can run right over here.
You want it to be 8:30, I'll change it.
I'm okay either way.
And, Ms. Ward, do you have a question about the length?
No, I just wondered how long the meeting usually lasts.
This is actually a, a good move on this 'cause it could take an entire morning. We're, we're probably discussing more than just capital items on the budget, so it probably would be better, you'd probably be more apt to stay till noon time rather than start at 10:00 and stay till 1:00 or 1:30.
Okay. So are we gonna change it? We put the change right on here right now?
Yeah, at 8:00.
After we've
Don't we need to vote?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
Your amended report.
So the next meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be the workshop on January 26 from 8 until approximately noon time, hopefully maybe end a little before noon. Then in the month of February, you're, you revert back to your normal meeting schedule, your first and third Monday of the month, February 2 at 9:00 AM, February 16 at 6:00 PM. Item B is one to bring to the board's attention. I believe you've got a copy of a flyer in your weekly info packet regarding a Pitt Greenville Airport Neighborhood Meeting that will be hosted by the airport as well as Commissioners Mary Perkins-Williams and Commissioner McLaughlin. This will be to just discuss items of interest to the different neighborhoods in and around the PGV Airport. This will be on Tuesday, January 20 from 6:30 to 8:30. This will be held at the Agricultural Extension Center Auditorium, and any Commissioners are welcome to, to attend this if you would like. Item B, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, as you're aware, this week will be embarking upon their biannual legislative goals process. And in concert with that, through a separate process, they have requested of all the 100 counties to consider helping them create a federal legislative process or set of goals. So with that being said, we have asked our, our leadership management team within the county for suggested goals. Pretty much at this point, we have came up with and thought to endorse those goals that the association has put together. I was gonna ask Janice if she would just to briefly go over the set of goals the association has proposed at this point.
Sure. The, the association is embarking upon the process, so they're still soliciting additional goals. There's time if this board has any new ideas to add. The deadline for that is January 16. But to piggyback on their 2014 goals, all of which still have relevance, there are eight that the association has designated as federal issues to support at the federal level this year. The first one follows on what we talked about earlier this morning with education is to make sure that budget reforms do not result in unfunded mandates to counties from the federal level. So it's to protect any inappropriate shifting of responsibility from the federal level down to counties. The second goal relates to that. It has to do with protecting temporary assistance to needy families, call that TANF, and SSBG, the Social Services Block Grant. Those federal funds support mandatory programs, programs required to carry out related to adult services, child protective services, and work first. And so there's, the second goal is to assure that that funding is not reduced at the federal level, again, resulting in a shift because the programs don't go away if the federal funds go away unless that mandate changes. So again, another, particularly with regard to social services, a goal to prevent the shift of federal funding down to the county level. The third goal is one that's gotten some attention over the last year or so in the press, and that relates to the Marketplace Fairness Act. That's a bill that has been proposed in Congress that will require internet companies to pay sales tax in North Carolina. Currently, there's no requirement for that to happen. It passed the Senate at the federal level. It's been stopped at the, in the House of Representatives at the federal level and has not had any action. But the Association of County Commissioners supports the Marketplace Fairness Act to assure that all states receive sales tax on internet sales within their state. The fourth goal is to maintaining, to maintain funding for education and workforce development. Again, not to reduce any funding that would shift any responsibility to the county level and to maintain current levels of funding for education and workforce development programs. The fifth goal of eight relates to the National Flood Insurance Program, and that's to monitor revisions to what they call the Bigger Waters Act, which affects flood insurance, to be sure that both coastal and inland properties who have faced drastically increased national flood insurance program rates are not further harmed by the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act. And so again, that's to watch what activity happens there to be sure it doesn't negatively impact homeowners who have to purchase flood insurance through that program. The sixth goal is to reinstate federal capacity funding for cooperative agricultural extension services. So this goal is also close to home in an agricultural area where we are. The counties have had a long and strong connection with the North Carolina Agricultural Extension Cooperative Extension Program. In both urban and rural areas, extension partners play a significant role. We want to be sure federal funding remains for those programs. The seventh goal is to support funding for improvements to broadband access. The overarching goal is to be sure that everybody, even in the rural areas, has internet connection, and that requires the infrastructure to make that happen. So it supports fundings for improvement to broadband in rural areas. And then the last federal issue that's been presented by the Association of County Commissioners is the development and implementation of realistic, fair, and enforceable national immigration policies. This requires additional studying with input from emergency health, education, public safety, and how those services and needs impact everyone with regard, regardless of immigration status. And the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is requesting that Congress address and pass reasonable reforms to the immigration policies that will better assist counties in delivering services to those in their communities. Those are the eight goals that have been proposed by the Association of County Commissioners. They are the carryovers from 2014. There may be additional goals that the association adds to this list after they've received input from other counties. But I suppose what we need to hear from this board at this time is whether or not you are in agreement with these, want to not lend support to any of these, or have any new goals that you would like to add to the list.
Anyone have any comments or direction?
I would say that Commissioner Glenn is well-suited to speak for the board on those goals.
I think when you look at the association's goals, they're, they're not necessarily focused on the issue itself, but how it affects counties and mainly concerning tax dollars. Every mandated service that we have that's funded by the federal government, if it goes away, we have to pick it up because the mandate never leaves with the funding, but sometimes the funding flies away. And, and specifically, when you look at the immigration reform, what we're asking for there is to ensure that as we're delivering services, we're delivering effective services, the money comes in and that we're easily, we're able to identify the people that we're giving services to under the mandates that they pass from us from Washington.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Ward.
In, in those legislative goals, the point about education and funding, the life emphasis that Commissioner Coulson just pointed out, is there, is that a piece, a part of that?
It is. This particular goal really has more to do with education for workforce development, not necessarily K-12 education, but I think the, the overall objective to maintain funding where counties need it addresses exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you.
And that item on the agenda was actually item E that we discovered. I think I jumped down to that. Jumping back to item C regarding the legislative goals breakfast that you as a Board of Commissioners will be holding, this will be held on January 30 at 8:00 AM. This will be at the Seahorse Restaurant, and this is the meeting which the board meets with the legislative delegation, the North Carolina Legislatures. It's part of your delegation. And just to remind the board, particularly Commissioner Farley and Perkins-Williams, back in the fall, the county went through a process of identifying local legislative goals for Pitt County as an organization. The department heads were, were asked to come up with suggested goals. We then collated those and brought those to the board in a package. The board then reviewed those and deliberated those and passed that set of goals. That set of goals became Pitt County's legislative agenda per se. That was sent on to the State Association, who then directed those to go to different committees, to be vetted through their process. And then eventually, the Board of Directors of the Association has came up with a proposed legislative goal list that this week is being discussed by the, all 100 counties and their delegates and the Board of Directors, and they'll come up with the final list of, of goals. So just wanted to remind the board, especially the two new, two new board members, how that process worked, and we've vetted all of our, our goals up there. The breakfast we'll have on the 30th, as, as mentioned in item C, will be Pitt County's specific goal list. Some of our goals were picked up by the State Association, some were not. Some are more pertinent just to Pitt County and weren't really appropriate to be a statewide goal, so that's why we'll have the breakfast to go over those goals with our local delegation. We may want a special act just for Pitt County, or we may pertain to our goals. We may want a statewide act, so that's part of that process. I just wanted to kind of define that. So jumping down to, I guess, item D, I've reported on the Chicago Sewer Project several times in the past. Just want to let you know that the project is in the ground, it is operational, and just wanted to make that, that report to you. Then jumping to item F on the agenda, wanted to make the board aware, I think you've seen some press on this, or we provided this to you in writing in the weekly info packet, that the, our LME, our LME stands for Local Management Entity, as it deals with mental health services provision, that our LME, which is ECBH, which stands for East Carolina Behavioral Health, has signed a, a resolution or merger of intent to merge with Coastal Care out of Wilmington. And basically, there will be a total of 24 counties. This will be one of four LMEs in the state of North Carolina. And this will be, again, 24 counties. And in talking to Dwayne Holder and his materials he's provided, within our own LME, new LME region, again comprised of the ECBH and the Coastal Care, these 24 counties, they're proposing to create three subregions within our new LME that will have, have a committee or a, or a board type advisory board, thank you, which then will feed up to the main LME board of the new entity yet to be named, whether it's, you know, probably a new name. It won't be ECBH, it won't be Coastal Care. So I wanted you to be aware of that. The effective date of this merger, to be totally functional, is July 1, 2015, this year, and so that'll be moving forward. I've got additional information on that if you'd like to see it or hear it. Then moving on to the next item, just want to bring you an update on the MOU or the Memorandum of Understanding between the Pitt County Board of Commissioners and the NC East Alliance. As you recall, the NC East Alliance used to be the North Carolina's Eastern Region. That's when it was a, a state partnership primarily funded by state dollars. That has, has basically gone away as of July 1 of last year, 2014, and is now, as a private entity, is now the NC East Alliance, whereas before it was North Carolina Eastern Region. The former Eastern Region was comprised of 13 counties. When this board adopted the resolution of intent to, to join this new entity at the same time or right following it, the, the new alliance entered into a resolution of intent to join itself with another alliance called the NC East Alliance. to join itself with another alliance called the NC East Alliance. All these names are very confusing, I realize, because they're all very similar. The NC East Alliance was comprised, or is comprised of 13 counties, or our, I'm sorry, our alliance is comprised of 13 counties. The alliance they're going to join with is comprised of 16 counties, so you're talking about a 29-county alliance basically for economic development. At this point, the, the alliance that we sent our MOU to has indicated that they are not, what's the word I'm going to choose here, they're not choosing to enter into an MOU with Pitt County. They're saying that initially, when it was just the 13 counties of, of our region before they gave the intent to merge with the other alliance, that there were too many other counties that wanted the MOU as well. Initially, the word we got was that they were going to create a model MOU, maybe based upon some of the points in, in ours, they then merged with this other alliance that brought additional 16 counties to the table. I think they've decided now they have 29 counties, that probably an MOU is not feasible or practical to put into place. I've indicated to their director, John Chaffee, that we, as a county, unless you advise differently, will still use the metrics in our MOU to judge the services that they provide to us and will use that to decide whether after the end of this fiscal year, ending June 30th, as to whether the county would probably stay in the alliance or not stay in the alliance. If we come out of the alliance, then there's the, I think it's about $200,000 plus or minus left on the table of dues that they're holding, they would have to revert back to us that then could be used for economic development purposes by our own Economic Development Commission. So that was all very confusing. I can put that in writing if you like it, but that's kind of where we stand with the, our Memorandum of Understanding with the North Carolina's East Alliance.
I think it's important that we understand that we are going to remain for the rest of this year and so we can see the, if there are any improvements or anything that we feel like the county benefits from with this. And that we're going to use the MOU, which is kind of an evaluation process. It's like an evaluation sheet and we'll use that to determine how helpful they have been as far as Pitt County is concerned and with the mix of all the counties in there. It's a good idea on paper and we don't want to get lost in the mix and I'm glad that we're going to take this year to evaluate it and see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garris.
Quite frankly, Mr. Chairman, I'm very disappointed that we don't have that MOU signed. That is something that we have worked on, the Development Commission Board, this board, with John Chaffee. We have worked on that for many, many, many hours and had several versions of that. And we finally came up with this Memorandum of Understanding and I, I'm disappointed that they didn't sign it because what that means now, we are, we are a part of this alliance by default. And every month we are members of that, they are pulling money from our account. And we wanted some specific criteria and understanding with that organization that if we were to continue to be a member. And I, actually, it was my understanding that part of our commitment to be a member of that organization this year was that they signed that MOU. And they are not doing that and that, quite frankly, disappoints me.
Do we have any options?
Your, your option is to withdraw from the, the new NC East Alliance. In talking to the executive director, our own executive director of the Pitt County Development Commission, Wanda Yuhoofs, our feeling is that probably, since we're halfway into this current fiscal year, that we would probably have to ride this year out in terms of the membership, but come June 30th or July 1, if you choose to withdraw, then we could get the balance of our revenues from them.
Mr. Garris.
I agree with that, Scott, but I'm still disappointed. I think, I would think that this would be an item on our Development Commission Board meeting this month and I'm sure that it will be discussed, but I'm still disappointed and that disappointment will be reflected in how we analyze their performance and whether or not I decide that is appropriate to go with them for second year.
Thank you, Mr. Garris.
I did indicate to the executive director of the NC East Alliance, Mr. Chaffee, that this news would probably not be well received by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. He did indicate he would be happy to come and speak with the board or speak with staff, but I, I felt like we've spent a lot of time, as Commissioner Garris mentioned, developing the MOU. Mr. Yuhoofs, myself, and, and Mr. Chaffee sat down and hammered out and made concessions to the MOU. It was then vetted through their legal staff, who, who saw no problem with it and said they would take it on to the full board. So we have met, we have talked, but if, if the Development Commission would like him to come forward or eventually come back to the Board of Commissioners, if you desire that, we can arrange that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Coulson.
I personally think that we ought to withdraw from it right now. If we decide to wait for the rest of the year, I think since this board is funding it, we ought to send a letter of, I'll use Jimmy's word, disappointment, and it needs to be clearly worded and strongly worded, to let them know that they're, they're trading on some thin ice. I'll bet you there's other counties out there that are going to be similarly disappointed. That's all.
Ms. Williams.
I did go to a workshop or a, a conference or something they had at, this past summer at the Hilton. That's what was my first exposure to it and learning what I am, what I'm hearing today. When someone doesn't keep their promise with me, I don't, I don't take to it lightly. And I strongly support the comment that Commissioner Coulson looked like this is your day, Coulson, with me. But I, I strongly support that because your word is really, should have been an honest situation. And I, I appreciate your explaining that, Commissioner Garris, because not being here, it does make a difference. And I certainly would support Coulson's recommendation.
Is it, before we move on, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Coulson, are you making a motion?
Do I need to make a motion for us to send a letter? Okay, then I, at least then, I think we as a, we need to have staff draft a letter telling them of our disappointment.
I second that if it's necessary.
Jimmy, would you like to amend what?
Well, I tell you what I would prefer.
Okay.
Since this process originated with the Development Commission Board, that we have ordained to explore these, these issues, I would prefer that we discuss it at our next Development Commission Board, and if they recommend the same thing that you recommended, then I would be wholeheartedly supportive of it. I'm supportive of it anyway, Tom.
Can we go to that meeting?
But I would prefer to go through the Development Commission Board first.
Okay.
Because I think they'll feel the same way.
I think that's a good idea.
I would. I support the idea, but I think that's a good thing to do.
Mr. Hannah, thank you, Ms. Williams.
I'd like to offer a motion that I'll raise on, make the Development Commission Board aware of this board's feeling.
I will definitely do that.
And Ms. Perkins-Williams asked if, if, if the board members here could attend that meeting, they can. It normally meets the 4th Thursday of each month and they'll be meeting January 22nd at 5:00 PM at the Development Commission's or the Tax Secretary's Office.
May I get an email, Kimberly?
Yeah, we can notify you of that meeting date and time.
I'm learning to manage my calendar, y'all. I'm so sorry, I have to do that to Kimberly.
One more comment. I am your appointed representative to that board, so I will be there and you are surely welcome to be there also.
Thank you so very much. Education is power.
Mr. Mann.
Sir, the two other items on the agenda, real quick, we'll call this Agenda Item H, even though it's not, not on the agenda. As you saw in the, the media, Pitt Community College, via your application before, the Federal EDA Economic Development Administration was awarded a $2 million grant for the, to further expand the scope of work on their new science and technology building. There was a press conference on that Friday that Ms. Ward and myself attended and I think there's a lot of press coverage on that. Then one other item, Alice Keen had asked me to announce that the District Park Site Plan will hold a second public meeting. This will be on January the 27th, which is a Tuesday. That'll be at, I believe there's a, at 5:00, there's a, a meeting, then at 6:00, there's a follow-up meeting on that. The 5:00 is for, find the information here, open house to review the draft plans, then at 6:00, their consultant will be in to make a more of a formal presentation. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Ward, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move that we accept the items for consent on the agenda.
Second. Now, are there items for discussion with Ms. Yarborough?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This item is for Martin Community Action. There was a request that they come before the Board of Commissioners for consideration to be heard regarding their status of their agency. Myself and Commissioner Perkins-Williams met with Ms. Yarborough, I think it was before Christmas, maybe a couple?
We met with her.
Yeah, before or after Christmas. And my understanding is they're making a similar request appear before their other two member counties, being Martin County and Beaufort County.
Welcome.
There's, there's a letter before you that she had, had wrote as well, but didn't get in the agenda package.
Good morning. And I first want to take the opportunity to thank each of you for allowing myself as the CEO, Mr. Moses Matthews, our board chair, and our finance director, Ms. Connie Phelps, to present to you on this morning. I would like to first talk about our services and the economic impact that we have made in Pitt County. For over 49 years, we've had our Community Service Block Grant Program that operates in Martin, Pitt, and Beaufort Counties. And for over 39 years, we have had Head Start in Pitt County. Head Start has been operating from our agency for almost 50 years, but in Pitt County, it's been servicing for approximately 39 years. We currently serve 268 children in Pitt County, which is 49% of the children that we serve. We serve a total of 547. When I look at the statistical dollars that have been put into the services that we provide to children and families through our Head Start program, over the past three years, we have in Pitt County, the economic impact has been approximately $8,028,829,296. Now, in our Head Start program, what we do, we provide early childhood education. Those dollars go into providing support to our families through many different means. In their first 90 days, 90 days, every child receives a vision, medical, hearing, and dental screenings. We do all these screenings so that we can provide services that hopefully will have this child ready for school. If we can find any developmental issues, any developmental delays, if we can find anything, even dental issues can prevent a child from being able to function properly in a classroom. So our program puts dollars into doing all of that at the very beginning of their year or possibly two years with us, depending on their age. We also provide services to the families. So we have a holistic program looking at education, health, nutrition, mental health services, and with the fa, with the families, trying to get them to create goals, to become self-sufficient, if not, or trying to just get them to understand what it means to be your child's first teacher. We provide those services and try to create atmospheres that we can work through any challenges or lack of understanding that they may have on their child's education and then hopefully they will take that into the school system and be an active participant in the schools with their child. Our Community Service Block Grant Program has been in existence since 1965. And just to share some of the statistics and what we do with that program, the goal is to create a comprehensive service for low-income families. It is individualized based on the family that presents themselves to us. When we look at over the past approximate four to five years, we have completed 1,067 services in Pitt County, which has totaled to approximately $546,192. Now, what type of assistance has happened? 29 clients received childcare assistance, 23 received clothing assistance, 193 received educational support and assistance, 46 received employment support, 14 received food, nutrition assistance, 1 received gas assistance, 7 received housing support, 2 medical assistance, 12 mortgage assistance, 12 relocation assistance, 246 received rental assistance, 1 received substance abuse prevention treatment, 247 received transportation assistance, 210 received utility assistance. Those are just some of the impactful numbers that talks about what our services have been providing with the dollars that we receive in addition to any other, additional support other than our funding sources. We have right now approximately 66 employees in Pitt County, 63 in Martin and approximately 23 in Beaufort. The numbers that we, that I've shared with you show what has been the impact of what we do in Pitt County and our other two counties. And our position today is to come and to talk with you all, to ask and solicit your support in our organization. It is very common for county commissioners, Pitt County government, it's very normal for county governments to support community action agencies because of the amount of impact that we make in the community. As I gave those numbers, those very well could have been numbers that would have been approached to Department of Social Services or our Pitt County Health Department. However, with us providing those services, we hope to be able to prevent many things and to start that path of, as we've talked, I heard talked about earlier, trying to assure that children graduate from high school and hopefully go on to college or pick up some skill or talent. But when we look at our agency, if we can start working with the child at three years old, then that impact has began a lot earlier and then will hopefully make an additional impact into how they are to become an adult. In our program, we have, I cannot, I've just became the CEO in July of this year, and in looking at our records, what I could find, I could not find a time where our agency has come before Pitt County to solicit being appropriated in the budget and providing support. We would like to see that happen, as we would all three of our counties. We want to see that support so that we can continue to do the work that we are doing. Questions?
Mr. Garris.
What is your total budget now?
Our total budget now is currently around approximately $6 million.
Okay. How much of that, this is a question I always want to know with any of these supporting organizations. A large part of that is your current overhead if you have 152 employees. So of that $6 million, how much of it is overhead and salaries versus how much of it actually gets to the kids and the low-income families that we're trying to help?
Okay. I were, our Head Start budget is right at $5 million and I believe it's approximately about $2 million that goes to employees and then the remainder goes into services. And those employees, just so everyone is aware, we have different mandates that are very interesting when it comes to Head Start that we have to abide by. For example, our classrooms require one to nine children, whereas that's a little bit more stringent than what the state of North Carolina requires. However, the Office of Head Start is adamant about trying to assure that our children are leaving learning and protected during the school day. So we provide transportation in some of our centers and the requirement is that we have a bus driver and a bus monitor on each of those buses. We have case managers and the Office of Head Start says each case manager should carry average caseload of 35. Right now, most of ours carry an average caseload of 45 to 50. So the employment of the staff in the Head Start program as well as in our Community Service Block Grant are very strict and very defined on what those requirements are. And so that kind of makes up how the administrative piece of that is.
So if I understood correctly, $5 million of your six- So, if I understood correctly, five million of your six million is for Head Start?
Correct.
Okay, so the other million goes to support the low-income?
Yes, the CSBG program, yes.
Is that a split also about the same ratio as the two million versus three million for Head Start?
Yes.
About the same?
Both of those programs are very, have very strict guidelines about that money going into services. So, we operate on the bare minimum when it comes to staff, meeting the requirements that are required, and not really having any major additional staff, but basically trying to make sure that we meet the requirements.
Mr. McGaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the privilege of serving as chair of this Martin Community Action for more than several years, and I found that this organization has proven to be very beneficial in terms of providing for low and unprivileged children within Pitt County, as indicated by the statistics that we just heard read. Also, you know, one of the things that I noticed while serving on that board is that there's a lot of restrictive funding, and that you are not able to do certain things in terms of meeting salaries or other things because of the restrictive funding. I think one of the concerns that I experienced as a chairman of the board during the time, we had to borrow money to use for unrestricted needs. And so, we were able to do that and pay that back. So, I think what I'm hearing now, and it's a problem now in that we, you all just don't have the money, flexibility enough to do certain things because of restriction, and that's a federal government mandate. And I certainly understand that. I think that, Mr. Chairman, whatever we can do in terms of, because of the impact with the children here in Pitt County, anything that we can do to help in this situation, I think would be appropriate. One, another thing that I do know, that Duke, P. Martin Natural Gas used to, they collaborated with us during that time and provided for low-income citizens for their homes improvement and this type of thing. I think we still, at least I thought, we still maybe have a relationship with them, maybe Duke Power. So, Mr. Chairman, you know, I really think that they've done some things in terms of making an impact on the citizen here in Pitt County, and I certainly think that whatever we might be able to do to help in this need. The other point I want to make is that if there's a possibility, if we could help, that we could maybe loan you the money and have you pay us back in a certain increments in terms of years, four, five, six years, pay that money back. Would that certainly be a possibility? These are some things that I just...
I do want to share, you mentioned Duke Energy, and we are early in the phases, but we did just receive our letter that we applied for a Duke Energy grant. And our North Carolina Community Action Association received twenty-four million dollars for the state of North Carolina to provide weatherization services through Duke Energy. And we did apply for that, and we have received our letter. I'm actually going to Raleigh on tomorrow to discuss the details of it, but we were awarded, and we were only awarded Pitt County, just by chance, we received that. And so, on tomorrow, I will be going into a meeting with our North Carolina Community Action Association and all of those that were awarded dollars for the Duke Energy grant. We are aware that Pitt County does not have as many clients that receive Duke Power as others, but we did feel that it was important to be able to bring that piece to our agency and to this area. So, we have received that for Pitt County, and we'll have details, more details going forward after tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to tell later that MCA is a misnomer for a lot of the areas and places they serve. So, this is the organization named Martin County Community Action, but if you look in there, who they serve, they serve several counties in eastern North Carolina, and we are one of the ones. One thing I found out in your report this morning is the bus, the monitor, and the driver, you're paying for the service that they are rendering in transporting participants in the program. And thank you, Mr. McGaw, for making that suggestion that we help them all that we can, even if it's through a loan.
Ms. Ward.
A few questions. The, is this the first request or the second request?
They came before you on June seventeenth of two thousand and fourteen. She's correct, the Martin Community Action has never come as part of the formal budget process, but they did come in June of two thousand and fourteen.
Right. Being a retired educator, I totally understand the importance particularly of the Head Start program and the more for preparing these young people for public schools or any classroom that they would enter as a kindergartner or a first grader. How much of a reduction or a cut have you all received, say, in the past five years? Has there been one from the federal government? I mean, there are other sources, but any of those?
Yes, and Head Start, last year, we received a cut of approximately two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars that was due to sequestration, and we have...
Explain what that is.
Sequestration across the nation went in and looked at different agencies and programs that they felt could be cut. And even though we were, there was strong advocacy for Head Start, even from our very own President Obama, there was strong advocacy for our program, however, we did receive that cut, and that was approximately two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. This year, our new grant has just started, January one, and we don't have a cut this year for our funding from Head Start.
Okay, now, when you get a cut, like we experience that kind of thing all the time, the Board of Education does, everybody does, what did you all do at that time to accommodate that two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars?
What we did, the agency made a decision to stop the three percent contribution into retirement. The employees could still contribute, but the agency side of that, which is three percent, and that was able to be put back into services for the children. We also closed one center, which was twenty children, in Bellhaven. And, excuse me, and we were able to determine that because of, we continuously had issues of trying to keep that center full. So, because of our community assessment showing that Bellhaven, even the childcare centers there are having a lot of issues because it has become more retirement, and there are less people that are having young children living there. So, we closed that center. And now, we are opening, we restored those twenty slots in our school system. We were able to partner with Martin County Schools, and we're using a classroom in one of the elementary schools, and this is the first time that this has happened in Martin County to do some type of collaboration like this. And we're doing it as a mock, so that possibly we can come to Pitt County and possibly do something similar. But it's going to give us less overhead because of the partnership. And that was another additional thing that we did to cut. And I'm trying to think, there was something else that we did do. Those are the two major pieces that were able to allow us to be able to adjust to those cuts.
The, when you see how much you get, and that, there's so many agencies out there that have, we've received cuts and cuts and cuts, federal, state, and, you know, you have to rally and figure out what you can do. And I think that's one of the things that you all must continue doing.
Correct.
You know, and the other thing I want to say is that there are a lot of things in your report that our local services in all counties are doing for our citizens. You know, as far as the family and housing and, you know, that sort of thing, and helping with the utilities, and, you know, through our social services, our health department, and all of that sort of thing. It is a phenomenal program, and I have always felt like that it was. But when you're federally funded and you use your money up early on into the month that is allotted to you, it indicates to me that as a group, you need to be looking more closely, maybe, at what other things can we do to, you know, reduce? And I'm not saying that you're not doing that, and I know that you're coming on and you've done a very good presentation this morning, but I really do think that that needs to be a big focus. And that kind of report needs to come back to us as to how you're dealing with the money you have. And maybe, and I don't know that it's possible, I know exactly what it means to be on the budget when you get federal money. They put criteria down there that you have to have, and that's just how it goes. And the same thing with state money, same thing with county money. But the point is that leadership has to step up to the plague when that happens to us. I'm surprised that that's the only cut. I mean, that amount of money, and I'm not saying it's the only cut that you've had to deal with, but that amount of money is, you know, over this period of time when everything, you know, was kind of going downhill as far as allotment, and, you know, we've had employees in the county that have had to accept no raises for many, many years. We've had jobs that we did not refill, and our employees had to step up and like take more children into their classroom or take more responsibility. So, I'm just saying that that is something that I think we, I personally would like to see more of from you all and more specifics about that before, you know, we would consider the additional money. Thank you for the job you do.
So, just a couple of things to make everyone aware. We, in our office, did look at what we could do within our office, the executive management part of it, and we did do a reduction in the workforce. We went down, in fiscal, we had three people, and we went down to two. The, and I won't say it's unfortunate, because I believe in assuring that children are safe, but we have very strict requirements that make it a very challenging thing to look at the Head Start piece, as in cutting staff, because we have those requirements that they put on us. And so, we have to abide by those, especially when it comes to supervision. And any of you that have had a three- or four-year-old or interact with one, they can, having eighteen of those in one classroom can be very interesting. So, we have a lot of mandates on us that don't allow us to do anything other than watch that Head Start budget and follow it to the T as we designed it. Our CSBG, we already know that we're going to experience approximately a forty percent cut in July. And so, and they've been very clear, you cannot take more services, clients, and put them on another case manager. You will have to decrease your services. And so, it really, we have done several things that we did, but it had to do more of an impact on the agency as a whole versus those individual programs. Now, myself and Ms. Phelps coming in now are at a place where we both came in a little behind everything that had occurred. And now, we're looking at, for this year, we have a list of things that we feel will help us to be able to move forward and to move forward, you know, in a more efficient way. Having unrestricted dollars is really the piece that will help us a lot to be able to move forward and assure that we have everything that we need. For example, with our buses, we looked at cutting transportation. But because I've been a Head Start director, I understand our communities, and there are a lot of places that if we stop doing transportation, they won't get there. And so, and then not knowing the price of gas and oil, and we have very old buses, they break down, you got to fix them, and trying to explain to a parent, you know, that they need to figure out a carpool or something to get to our sites is a challenge. But we certainly have a list of things that have been done since we have come on board to look at addressing what we can do. And we feel that that's important, and definitely can send that to you all.
Commissioner Owens.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, how much are you asking for this morning from this board?
A hundred thousand dollars.
All right, had you said that in any of the mail or communication, or was that verbally, you just, did I miss that figure somewhere?
No, I had not said it yet.
Okay.
And what we...
I want to commend any group that goes out and works for poverty for the good work that you do. But as a commissioner, I am not in a posture, Mr. Chairman, reading this material that we have here to make a decision as to whether, how I should spend the taxpayers' money of Pitt County. I think Mr. Garris hit on the concept of a six million dollars. Now, whether that's the total budget, federal, three or four counties, or multiple counties, or whatever, but specifically for Pitt County, and like we see here, it said there's a thousand sixty-seven services in Pitt County totaling five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars, I'd have to have some more specifics about expenditures and about revenues from whence the money came and from where it was going before I could vote to give additional county money, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Owens, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Yarborough, when you and I and Commissioner Perkins-Williams met back in mid-December, some of the things that we talked about and discussed was, one, that you operate on a calendar year in terms of a budget. So, January one through December thirty-first. You had just received your two thousand thirteen audit in December of two thousand and fourteen. That showed you had a operating loss of about three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. We had asked in that meeting what you projected your operating loss or where you would stand December thirty-first for two thousand and fourteen. Have you, do you know that number?
Well, we haven't actually finished up December yet, you know, with it being only into the second week of January. Of course, you know, we accountants fall about a month behind. So, right now, we're finishing getting everything in. We did have a little bit of a break with some of my employees taking off vacation during the holidays. So, we hope to have everything in the system and have a good look at what two thousand and fourteen is going to look like by the end of next week.
Do you have a projected number? I know with our board, we give monthly budget reports as to exactly where we stand month to month.
I'd hate to give you a number. Ms. Yarborough didn't explain, I've just been with the agency, I've just hit my ninety-day mark. So, I'm still very, very new to the agency. I have many years of experience in the for-profit world, so I'm learning the nonprofit world. So, I really would be afraid to give you that number and it not be correct.
So, will you be making a similar request of a hundred thousand dollars from Martin and Beaufort Counties?
We already have.
You've been before them?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us what their response was?
Their response, basically, Martin County and Pitt County, Martin County and Beaufort County all want to see that we have support from all three, because of the fact that we do serve all three. And Beaufort County is our smallest county. We only serve about fourteen percent of our children are in Beaufort County. So, they made it clear that they wanted the county managers to talk about what each county is going to do, because we do serve three counties. And so, I have, the numbers that I gave you all this morning gave the same numbers for each county in the presentations to them as well. And so, we feel like once we finish this meeting today, then they want to, each one wants to know what is the other going to do, because we do serve three counties.
I think as, to echo Commissioner Owens's comments, and I think my comments with Ms. Perkins-Williams at our meeting in December was similar, that we don't know if we're plugging the dike or if we're solving a problem by making appropriation, because we don't have the, like Commissioner Owens said, we don't have the full revenue expenditure picture. We don't even know where you're going to end up December thirty-first for last year. So, as manager, I'd find it hard making a recommendation to this board to make an appropriation, not even knowing, again, are we plugging the dike or are we solving a problem? Are we solving a problem? And is it a loan? Is it a periodic appropriation? That's just my comments.
Commissioner Williams.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am, you made a statement relative to Belle Haven. Wouldn't that come on the Beaufort County?
Yes, yes. And so that's, we have, we still have seventy-five children in Beaufort County that are actually on the Pitt County side of Beaufort County, where we serve, we have seventy-five children that we serve there. And we are now about to put our bid out because we are going to use a different auditor for 2014. And that is usually done around April. But what we will be able to do, because of the fact that the centers, all those monthly bills for December don't come in until January. And of course, we both did not come in at the beginning of this year. So as we look at the financials, one of the things we know that really hurts us is not having unrestricted dollars. So anytime the cash flow, there is any issues with cash flow, money not coming in exactly when it should be, changes in leadership, anything like that, not having any unrestricted dollars has been, and based on my observation and my research, that has been a definite concern. We can present numbers based on, once all of those bills have come in for this month and they very well, that very well may be this week, our fiscal director can prepare a report of what we believe things will look like for 2014. But we do know that we have begun our new grant for Head Start, and we already know that CSBG is going to be cut by forty percent. And CSBG runs July to June, and everybody across the whole state is getting a cut with CSBG. So that is known by all of the, all community action programs. However, we know ours is forty percent, which is going to definitely have an impact on the services that we provide. I also wanted to just share too, one of the commission awards that you made as far as us collaborating. We do, we collaborate with Pitt Community College, Martin Community College, Beaufort Community College. We collaborate even with car dealers because we have bought cars for clients. And so we have car deals that collaborate with us and will give us a good price on vehicles. We have a lot of collaborations that we do. And what we believe is by us being able to do that rent assistance or that utility assistance, that offered more to the county. So the county was able to provide that dollar to another person. And that means that we were able to assist two people in our county versus one. And so CSBG, they give us the dollars with the expectation that we do things like that in our counties. And so hopefully, we look at those numbers and feel like, okay, great, the county is able to do more because we're here and we are mandated to do those types of assistance. But we definitely feel like being able to continue doing those types of things, which is why we did apply for that due energy grant as well, so we can majorly impact the community.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. Ms. Oberon, I certainly appreciate your coming before this board and also meeting with Scott Elliott and myself. And unfortunately, Commissioner McGlaughlin could not be at that meeting. As a new appointee to your board, I guess as a liaison person, or what was that?
You're actually a board member appointed to, a voting board member, and kind of a liaison as well.
Oh, well, for whatever reason, and being new. And at the time of the appointment, even though my newspaper were with, Scott was kind enough to give me a copy of the article. That gave me a more in-depth view about Martin community action rather than seeing the bus move around in the community. I come from a very indigent area. North of Pitt County is not as prosperous as the rest of the area, so I understand that. And I don't like the recommendation of putting a loan on the people that's already indigent because how are you going to pay it back, is the first thing I'm saying. I mean, the newspaper has already said you have a problem. And certainly Scott knows that I'm not willing to support opening a hole in a dam that's already got a peephole in it. I certainly would like very much, and then the figures that you gave me this morning hit my gut. I guess I can say that on air because I didn't hear that number. I did hear fifty and-
Prior, in our prior meeting.
Yeah, in the prior meeting, and that makes me shake. But I would like very much, as a new member, to be given the opportunity to define or look into and inquire more into your operations. And as a board member, I would be able to do that, that I can come back and share with this board some of my nosy findings that I ask of you when I go to represent. But at the same time, commissioners, my colleagues and county manager, we relied a lot on, and as a new member, I don't have much choice to rely on Scott's recommendation. And I certainly wouldn't want to be a new member going to this board with a gaping gap. I'd like to see him start out in a very positive manner of consideration for whatever the worth may be because the poor cannot continue to be left poor without consideration from the prosperous. We need to be given some kindness, not, I'm not saying we need to pull whatever, but I think Scott might can do a little better than alone, I'm hoping. And that's just a hope, and that's my expression, not asking for anything. And I haven't had a chance to talk with others or the rest of you about it, and we don't do that. So I, as sitting here now, I'd like very much to see us consider the indigent in this county because our children, when they are on the short end of the stick, and that's everybody, need to be cared about from the heart string so that they can be given better opportunities in society in which we can function. I don't think when we take shots at other things, as I've heard here today, then we need to take a caring shot at indigent people. With that, I don't want to give a loan. I understand your recommendation as at least ten yuan money to them for that. I would like to see us give them a one-time supplement. I guess that word "sum" is "sum." You figure it out, Scott. Thank you.
Scott, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, just wanted to ask, when we met, you had mentioned that the full board would meet on January the 27th regarding this. Since you're asking now a hundred thousand versus fifty, total of three hundred thousand of all three counties, has the full board been apprised of this? Have they met, have they discussed it? Have they been given the financials? Have they, since you met with Ms. Perkins-Williams and myself?
Commissioners, may I respond, respond please? My name is Moses Matthews. I'm the current chair of the board. And we do have, for your information, we have a new board and we have new management. And we also have old and new vision because we want to continue to serve. I want to let you know for historical reasons, when we did a survey on Martin Community Action Head Start students and compared them to all the early childhood providers in Martin County, Martin County Head Start stood above them all, private, whatever. They do a great job in preparing kids for kindergarten and beyond. I'm here to request what one of our biggest funders have requested of me as a board chair. They would like for the county commissioners to give documented evidence that they're in support of Martin community action. I think I said that properly. They want you, they have the same, even though we just got a new contract. They want, Atlanta, our regional office wants to be assured that our local communities are supporting our entity and what we stand for and trying to do.
Mr. Garris.
Yes, a couple of questions. Is the money you are requesting now to help offset the federal cuts?
No, sir.
It is not. So then has the federal cuts been returned to you in this budget cycle?
Yes, sir.
So that sequestation, that has been refunded to you?
Well, we didn't get, no, we did not get that refunded. What they've done is this year, we don't have a cut.
So then you went back to your previous base?
That's correct. We went back to our previous base and we don't get, no, the staff don't get any raises or anything like that. We just were returned back to our previous budget. So we were able to add back in those twenty children. And we did that, and they did not tell us, you know, we had to because we had to say, once the money's restored, what are we going to do? But we agreed that the board was adamant about bringing those twenty children back because of the fact of the cuts and the low amount of childcare subsidy and for a number of reasons. So we did not get refunded that amount. All we did was we're starting this year off with our full budget. Now, for CSBG, that will impact us this year. That is going to impact us starting July 1st. And so therefore, these dollars would be able to assist us in trying to move forward, trying to deal with the cash flow challenges that have happened, and to try to assure that we're able to operate and provide high-quality services to all the children and families that we serve. So that's basically what happens when we have, when a program is able to have some unrestricted dollars and that keeps that cash flow from not being such a challenge. And if a grant doesn't come in on time or if there anything that happens to occur, then we have a cash flow that we can assure that we're able to operate and operate with a level of excellence that would make all of our children and families comfortable and proud as well as the counties that we live in.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dan.
The assistance you are looking for now, Scott, is immediate because they're on a calendar year budget. It's not to build into our budget cycle when we do the budget in May and June.
My understanding is they would like to come back and be included in all three counties' budget cycle as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
In addition to the hundred you're requesting now?
So that is what we're requesting now, but we would at some point like to be receiving something from the county annually.
So that one-time supplement is not your desire?
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Right. And so we would appreciate and definitely be ecstatic about the one-time supplement. And as we create this partnership and relationship, we hope that we will continue to show ourselves that we're moving forward, that we are capable of having this agency restored into a great way. And with Commissioner Perkins-Williams on our board, hopefully she can come back and report things to you all that would show that this is an agency that you would like to be doing some ongoing support with. And that is just, if that be something that comes.
May I add to that? The rationale behind it, we were, Martin County was giving us from 1995 to 2000, fifty thousand dollars a year. And they discontinued it in 2000. We feel that some of our deficiency right now, because we got adjusted to that fifty thousand, and part of our deficiency right now is a result of that discontinuation of that funding.
So am I understanding that what you really, what you really want, your ideal is to get a hundred thousand dollars now from the three counties, plus come back to us in six months during the budget cycle to ask us to put in dollars for you on an ongoing basis in our budget? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
If that would be, if that would happen, that is exactly what we would like to see happen.
Okay. I agree with Commissioner Owens. For me to make a decision on this, I need a whole lot more information than I have. And one of the things that I would need is a detailed budget showing expenditures and income. And one of the things, and I know this gets a little sensitive, but I'm sensitive to it because of previous experience on this board. What I would like also to include in that information is the salaries of your top five people. You don't have to give me the names, but just say, number one is this, number two, okay.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
In light of what I'm hearing, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a recommendation or motion that we ask the county manager and our fiscal director to meet with the CEO and the fiscal director, maybe the chairman of Martin Community Action Board and detail the questions that was raised at this board and ask the county manager to present back to us at a later date to his recommendation as to how we move forward.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Was that a recommendation of?
It's in the form of a motion, and I would second that motion.
Motion seconded.
I would like, when you, that motion, Commissioner McGlaughlin, includes the information back to us that I just requested?
Right.
Okay.
Right, good.
I will vote for that.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Wade.
Didn't take.
Thank you. Ms. Ward and then Mr. Hammond.
I just have one question, maybe it'll turn into two. The two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that you mentioned was in the hole from last year for Head Start, right?
Correct.
Now, that money is still out there that you don't have. Is that the three hundred thousand that you're hoping to get from us?
That is partial, part of that to-
But is it a big part of it?
Not a big part of the hole.
No, 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 but just the two seventy and the three hundred from the three counties. That would be, that would be going back to 2014. And I just wanted that clarified. And the other thing, and I wanted to ask that before I voted, but I didn't get that chance. The other thing is the Community Service Block Grant, which is the CSBG that you keep referring to. To me, that still, you know you're going to get a forty percent cut, so you're going to have to figure it out. And the things that that covers, I still say a lot of that is dealt with in the local counties with agencies that are already being funded. And the last thing I want to say is that we decided a long time ago with a lot of study and a lot of work and a lot of thought about contributing to nonprofits. I think those of us who have been on here for a while, we would at budget time have, I don't even know what the maximum number was. That used to come to us and it would be, and there was no accountability or anything to us for the money that we gave to the nonprofits. And that was happening, a lot of counties had already moved on that before we ever did. We were kind of behind on that. And there were, there are just a few, very few nonprofits that we regularly include. So I mean, I think it's fine for the manager to come back to us, but I think that we need to be getting informed all along because what I've heard here today still hasn't changed my mind about doing that in the middle of our fiscal year, which is not our budget time, which is usually a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. I don't know where we're going to get it from. So, thank you.
Mr. Dan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, you use in your presentation, while I go, the word "cash flow." I found out in my experiences, you can't have no flow until you have some cash. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dan.
May I ask one more question, quick?
Let me check your question count.
This is-
Go ahead, Mr. James.
If we were to do this, if we were to grant this hundred thousand, it'd have to come from our contingencies. Now, how much do we have left in contingency?
Hundred and eighty thousand.
Hundred and eighty.
That's, we're halfway through the year, so that's-
I know, I know, we've got lots of other things that come up. Okay, thank you, I'm through.
Thank you, Mr. Garris.
Can I let, is it possible for me to answer her question about the budget for CSBG? That cut, because we have already done that, we have already- Because we have already done that, we have already come up with that budget at adjustment.
Yeah, I knew you said that you had, but I just wanted to clarify that that agency is not the Head Start part of this. And to me, that is the primary focus of this, is to get our young people, and there's a lot of stuff on this list. And I know the home impacts it. I know that whether there's heat in the home and whether there's food on the table, I, of all people, understand that about our children learn. But I also know that, to me, the major focus of the whole program in the three counties is on getting these children early enough so that we can help them when they get to be five years old and get into public schools, that they're on the same playing field as any child that comes forward. And I still think that that needs to be the major focus. So that's, okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I, I understand it. I don't have to have it, you know, explained. I just want to make sure that, that we're not funding or focusing on putting money in anything else. That, to me, is it. And I don't want this money necessarily to go back to pay the, um, the fallback of money from last year. So, you know, when y'all talk to the county manager and the group, you can, you know, hash that out. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've talked about it enough, the manager has direction. We're going to move on. You'll be hearing from us, from the manager. Mr. Demery?
Morning.
Morning.
Back in October two thousand thirteen, I came before you and received approval to bid out a new roof system for our construction and demolition recycling program. This was delayed purposely back then because I started thinking and getting information about how we could improve how we're pulling material out. And the roof system will be a part of it, but maybe we should scale back of it, back, and look at some equipment that is out there that would help us. It's, it's a pick-and-line type material, a, a piece of equipment similar to what ECVC does. Other than that, it's, it's stronger because construction, demolition debris will go through this picking station. So after a year of looking and studying and, and talking to a number of people, I would like to, and I've prepared a, why I'm here is I've prepared a request for qualifications to send out to get an engineering firm to work with me to help me design, help me with the construction permitting or any of that type of material, type of work to proceed with implementing a construction and demolition recycling system that will increase the number of tons that were presently taken out. We're doing it right now, where we're just dumping the C and D on the ground and actually picking through it on the ground and with no automation. The equipment, if we purchase the equipment, would give us more automation, give us a better quality material that we're picking out. So the preliminary cost for the recycling system and the roof system would be about seven hundred thousand dollars. This money will come from my budget, my, um, uh, fund balance that we have. Not asking for anything out of the general fund. And right now, I'm just asking for permission to send out the qualifications for an engineering firm, get that back in, then I'll be back before you to award a contract at that time. I'll gladly answer any questions.
I second it, and I'd like to say one thing after my second.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Ward, then Mr. Coles.
It's a pleasure to work with you and that group. And thank you so much, John, for what you do and what your workers do out there. It is just such a wonderful thing. You never come forward that you don't have the money to pay for what it is you're going for. And just going out there now, as opposed to maybe ten years ago, I mean, you don't even know that it's a recycling solid waste unit. It is so well-run, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
Go get your equipment and your roof.
Commissioner Coles?
Uh, my question is, is if you go this route, what materials are you going to recycle? Ricks, asphalt shingle, lumber, whatever? How, what do you do with it when, in order to recycle it? Do you sell it to other companies? Are other companies going to come in and, and purchase it? Are you going to need more land and whatever else to be able to store, so?
Won't need any more land, won't need anything except the equipment. The shingles won't go through this system because we're already recycling the shingles, and we sell the shingles. We will take out the clean wood where we, instead of sending it to landfill, we'll grind it up. We sell some of the mulch as boiler fuel, plus we sell some of the mulch to the public. Sheet rock, we have a potential market for sheet rock. Right now, we are stockpiling it. That will be ground up, taken to a farm, dished into the farm. They want the lime at, uh, from the sheet rock. The metals, we already have, uh, we sell the metals to, to different metal vendors. What else will, hard plastics, what we call rigid plastics, buckets and that type thing. ECVC works with us on that. We, so we have a market for that. Anything that we, we're still looking, we're always looking at markets, but we have markets. Cardboard, ECVC's our market for cardboard, those types of things. So we won't be, we, we'll be able to handle it with the, with the facilities we got out there.
All right, thank you.
Won't have to hire any, shouldn't have to hire any?
Then you'll take a pay cut.
Don't know that I'd like that.
Well, hey, while we were on a roll there, you know.
All right, let's continue voting.
I do like my job, but not that much.
Just teasing.
Thank you.
Mr. Hammond, Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
David does.
Did it take?
Yes, but David.
Commissioner Hammond, you need to vote.
Sometime these things don't work.
All right, Mr. Elliott?
Yes, on the next item for the appointments report, Mr. Pitt County Board of Adjustment, you've, on page seventy-one, you've got four individuals of which three are being recommended to be reappointed. Ralph Skinner representing south of the river, Lee Ball, who's an alternate representative, and Bruce Porter Spokes-Stokes, who represents south of the river. Those three are all eligible for reappointment. Any holder who is north of the river is not eligible at this point in time. And the sta, the staff is saying that appointment will be brought back later, but they would like action on Mr. Skinner, Mr. Ball, and Mr. Stokes.
Move your board, Mr. Skinner, Ball, and Stokes.
Second it.
Mr. Elliott?
On the next one for the appointment to the Pitt County Child Fatality Team, this is an appointment that Jack Cody, former employee from Pitt County Emergency Services EMS, was in this position. Dr. Morrow's recommending that his replacement, Jim MacArthur, who now holds that position, be appointed to replace Jack Cody on the emergency fatality team. Pitt County Child Emergency Fatality Team.
Okay, Mr. Man.
And the last one, the appointment to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, on page eighty-nine. The council at the November twenty-fourth meeting recommends that Adam Leggett be appointed to, to fill seat number twenty-one. This is previously held by Chanita Vaughn of E, East Carolina Behavioral Health.
Move it, move. All right, we'll start it. This then, Mr. Hammond, you have any comments?
No comment.
Williams? Comments?
Not at this time.
Coles, sir?
No.
No comments.
McGlawn?
Yes, I make a mo, motion that you close the meeting with your gavel, sir.
Yeah, I'm gonna second it.
I second it.
For the first time in many years, we'll stand adjourned. Can have a motion to adjourn.